She was like, he's never been recognized for student of the month. I will say to you, Brian, character is what happens when no one's watching. But what you need to know, there's always someone watching. And I've seen you, I've seen your growth, and I am so super proud of you. Mr. Brian Parker and family, please join me up here. Congratulations.
The May Student of the Month for Southern Beaufort County is Yelsey Funes Perez, first grade student at Red Cedar Elementary School. And here to introduce Yelsey is Principal Dr. Kathy Corley.
Good evening, this is a rare treat to be here. When our students are recognized, it's usually at Bluffton Town Hall. And as it turns out, our April Student of the Month is being recognized, or just did get recognized about an hour ago. So our counselor is there, and our AP is there, and her teacher is there, and I'm here. But more importantly, Yelsey is here. Responsibility. Yelsey consistently demonstrates a high level of responsibility. She is always prepared for class, bringing her materials and completing her assignments on time. Her ability to follow classroom rules and routines sets a great example for her peers. For instance, she takes great care in organizing her desk and materials, ensuring that everything is in its proper place. Yelsey gets pulled out of class several times a day and has shown a great deal of responsibility by coming back into class, quickly figuring out what the rest of the class is doing, and getting straight to work so that she can complete her classwork alongside her peers. She shows no qualms about taking extra time during WIT, that's our whatever it takes time, or centers to complete her classwork that she misses when getting her other services. Cooperation. In addition to her responsibility, Yelsey excels in cooperation. She works well with her classmates during group activities, always encouraging others and listening to their ideas. Her positive attitude and willingness to help and work with others creates a warm and inclusive environment in our classroom. Overall, Yelsey embodies the qualities we aspire to cultivate in our students. Her commitment to being responsible and her cooperative spirit make her a deserving candidate for Student of the Month. I am proud to have her in my class and look forward to seeing her continue to shine. That was written by Mrs. Howell, and she will join us when Yelsey and her mom come up to greet us.
That concludes Points of Celebration this evening.
Thank you. We have public comments, but the public comments will have to come at the end of our session tonight. It's a light agenda, so it shouldn't be too late because the comments are not about what's on the agenda tonight. So we'll have to move on to the next item, which is the Chair's report. I have no report tonight, so we'll go to the committee reports. Academic Committee is the first one up.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Dr. Stratus, if she will present our report tonight, because I have to keep this on, and I can't possibly do justice to what I need to read to all of you and present tonight, so Dr. Stratus.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board members. And I have this evening also joining us is Ms. McKinsey, because she did attend the May 22 Academic Committee. So I just want to bring to your attention, you should have a quick executive summary. On May 22, the Health Advisory Committee, in accordance with the South Carolina laws Title 59-32-30, and the Beaufort County School District of Education, well, we shared that we have a Health Advisory Committee. We do recognize that they had presented to you as well as in February. At the May 22 Academic Committee, we wanted to share that the HAC had reviewed ancillary or supplemental health materials for use at our middle school and high schools. Their recommendation was that these materials can go forward for use within our schools. And this is basically an information only that was provided at the academic committee. There were no modifications determined to be made to those materials because they found them to be in accordance to the current laws and adopted textbook materials as well as the state standards.
Questions or comments?
And I'll pause for that because the second part of that evening will come up shortly because we have local board-approved courses for your consideration, and there's a motion for your consideration that will come up later on this evening's meeting. And in support of that, we have our principals here with us, who these local board-approved courses will be implemented at their schools, so thank you.
Ms. Gordon, is there anything else you wish to add in the committee report?
No, not at this time. I just want to thank the committee for their hard work and for all of you for listening tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item is the Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, I'll touch on custodial maintenance first, and then the construction update, even though it's third on our agenda, because after that, we'll invite Mrs. Crutchfield up for our 8% presentation. For custodial maintenance, we had 665 custodial inspections. Average district score for all the inspections was 85.6. Miss Majors complimented all three custodial groups for their exceptional support of the graduations across the district. So kudos to all of our vendors, and each of our vendors honored two employees. For maintenance, total work orders to date are 26,012. Total work orders completed to date are 21,029. North of the Broad, average days to complete work orders fell from March from 3.46 days to 2.67 days. South of the Broad, average days to complete work orders rose from 2.59 in March to 3.88 in April, but dropped again to 2.76 in May. So we're getting most of our work orders down to about a day and a half to complete. Let's see, the school spotlight for our blitz was Whale Branch Early Community College. We had 61 total work orders, five were 50, I'm sorry, 50 were completed. And to close out the maintenance portion, our open locksmith position has been filled, so now instead of being down eight people for our maintenance staff, we're only down seven. For our referendums, 2019, paid and committed funds total 373.7.
Excuse me, can we make sure you're going to the referendum? Could you see if there's any questions about the custodial or maintenance for the committee?
Questions going once, going twice? Moving on. 2000 bond referendum, the paid and committed 373.7 million, which is 99.48%. Remaining available funds, including contingencies, total 1.94 million, which is 0.052% of the overall referendum. For the 2023 bond referendum, we finally have an update from A River Elementary School. The permit has been received, but final approval has not been signed. Palmetto Bluff is waiting on one board member to sign, but we are expecting that final signature sometime this week. However, we are starting things over at the property. The silt fences have gone up this week. So we're, things are finally starting to move. The train has left the station, I believe. Paid and committed funds for 2023 referendum are 183.8 million, which is 41.88%. Remaining available funds, including contingency, total 255.1 million, or 58.12%. And program contingency remaining at the end of May 2025 is 11.74 million. It was requested by committee members to have another meeting on June 5. Normally, we would have a meeting after this board meeting, but it was requested to have a meeting on June 5 for a third discussion of our 8% capital project spending. But for whatever reason, we did not have a quorum present, so it was only an informational meeting. However, I promised the board that we would bring forward a product. So Ms. Carol Crutchfield is going to present the options. She's going to present five options to you, but really, there's only three options. And of the three, three options, three, four, and five, the consensus of the committee without a vote yet was, we narrowed it basically down to option three. So right now, we are the closest to option three. However, Ms. Crutchfield is going to give much more detail.
I'll go in, I'll go into as much detail as you all would like. But I'm gonna start with a little background overview, just about 8% and kind of the list and how we get there, just so it's very clear where this comes from. So you all have a book, and that's our facility's master plan, and that outlines the big projects that we talk about. But behind that, there is a master list, a tenure list of all the capital needs projects that we have. And so from that, we work with finance, we understand what our borrowing capacity can be, and so we get a number. And so we try to bring you a list for each fiscal year of what we can spend. So our first meeting in April, we brought a list that was $58.127 million. And that's so that everybody could take a look at it, see where they are, talk about how we can get options. So the committee asked us to bring back three options. And so at the May 13 meeting, we brought back five options. Because, so like Mr. Nae was saying, really, it's basically the three options. And between those three options, we kind of outlined what you would be getting and not getting for each of those options. And that was going to be part of the discussion, it was part of the discussion at the June meeting. So option three, which was the one that the committee was leaning towards, it includes some approved and allocated things, some recurring projects like painting, technology, all the technology needs that are there, and items that we had on the list is high priority. So we present these list of items, it's categorized several different ways, sort of by discipline and also by category, but there's always a list supporting that, so you can see the details of what's on those. And Ms. Cushionberry has those up here for you. So choice three was for $34.999,227. Choice four, 35 million, $15,227. It's very similar to option two, which was not a choice. And focused on funds already approved and allocated for the disrenovations, recurring projects, technology needs, and the high priority items were reduced down to 15 million. And then choice five, again, it's at 34,979,227. And that one includes the funds already approved and allocated for the district office. Recurring funds were reduced, so we wouldn't do as many painting projects under that one. We would push out the ones that we could. The technology projects under option, I mean, choice five, were reduced down to 2 million. And then high priority remaining at the $24 million. So those are your three choices that I think the committee had narrowed down to. And like Mr. Nae said, I think everyone was leaning towards option three on that. So I'll take any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so everybody, rather than trying to plow through all this stuff, the reason we got the closest to option three is because it contains all the funding that needed for technology, and most of the funding needed for roofs. We all agreed that roofs were a good thing. And us not backing down from the technology fees, also a good thing. You know, we don't want to skimp on any of our technology fees. So that's why we arrived mostly at option three.
Questions for Mr. Nae?
Yes, sir, let me start off by saying that I was one of the ones who was not at the meeting. And I was not there because I didn't, I wasn't on my calendar, I didn't remember about the meeting. And that's probably my first time missing operations meeting in about eight years, for just to let the record reflect. So do apologize about that. And to my question, and so hearing that, I remember when we were having this discussion, so there was some painting, there was some painting going on. And so in option three, you mean, so in option three, there's no painting? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, there are some painting projects, it's just that amount was reduced. We would not be doing all of them. So we were doing the higher priority projects for painting and pushing some that our project managers felt like if we had to choose, it would be one.
Could you, could you, could you come down to option, because I see option two, like how we see it right there on the screen?
Yeah, Ms. Cushionberry can scroll. Yeah, three, go down a little bit more to choice three. Oh, you're asking for two, I'm sorry.
The three options are, three options are, which one are?
So two was the one that we created that was based off your previous discussion in April, from your first meeting. And so that was the one, board members had input and wanted to prioritize certain things for. So that's how that one got developed. But that one's for $43 million, so that one is more than the money we. So that one is more than the money we really have to allocate.
And the other options are two, three, and which, what's the other, what's the other option?
Three, four, and five are really our options.
Okay, well, yeah, can we, can we move on to four? Excuse me, I apologize about that.
So this one does all the, four does all the painting, all the technology, and reduces all the other projects. Which would include?
Right. So, so then, and sorry, four, four, the roof would not, all the roofs would not be four?
Correct. Four delays Hilton Head Creative Arts and Bluffton High School roof replacements, but keeps most of the painting.
But in, and three, three would, three would
Three.
Show all the, we would get all the roofers done, get all the roofs done. Because I remember, and when we were discussing it, we were saying that it was important to get all the roofs done. That was definitely one of the, one of the most important things.
Doesn't include, fully fund Hilton Head Creative Arts, but it gets the more important sections of creative arts on the project list. But it keeps the Hilton Head Middle School and Bluffton Middle School roofing projects. And Beaufort High and H.G. McCracken paintings.
Did they, did we reduce anything in technology?
No.
And see, that was one of the things that I stated, that, you know, I would give a challenge that we reduce something in technology, because I, I think that is good to have technology, but the parents and everyone is asking in terms of more moving server back towards pen and paper. And, and you know, I understand that we had, that we do have technology issues, but I was looking for a reduce, is, is, I was looking for a reduce in that.
It's an option five.
Okay, well, let's look at option five then, please. And my logic, and my logic in that is because what I don't want to do is, as you just stated, you said that was majority of the project on Hilton Head.
So short, so option five, partially funds technology. It keeps the Beaufort High School, H.G. McCracken painting, and fully funds the four roofing projects. However, and I think Mr. Cho Han's here, so he can talk more about that. I think the concern is of delaying some of the technology projects, is that is the servers, that's sort of the backbone. That's not just the computer refresh, although that's part of it, but it's also the backbone of all the technology things.
Yes, basically, our whole technology system is built on life cycle refreshes. And due to the amount of money we spend on technology, if we miss a single life cycle refresh, you might as well put us back 5 million for the next year. Another reason that we want to do these projects at this time is by going with option five, we take almost $2.6 million worth of E-rate reimbursements from federal funds back. Because if we don't make the E-rate reimbursement on the first year that E-rate comes active, we tend to lose that money, because by the second year, all that money is gone. So every five years, we refresh our switching infrastructure for about $5 million, and we basically get about two point something back. And if we don't take advantage of that, that's 2 million that doesn't come back to the district. It also sets back cybersecurity on our server infrastructure, because every year our servers go out of date, we lose options for doing security upgrades on them. So that's one of the main reasons why we keep everything at a current level. State of South Carolina has been hit with a lot of cybersecurity incidents in the past six years. And as of now, luckily, we are not one of them. So we want to keep our going track with staying progressive and on top of our technology infrastructure.
So with that being said, then I know throughout the year, we collect money for technology fees and differently like other district. So how is that offsetting this price here? Because I mean, this is seems, you know, it seemed a little steeper.
We don't really collect that much money from the fees. We charge our kids $25 a year, which is one of the lower rates in the state of South Carolina and in Georgia. Most of them charge $35 to $50 a year for the students to take that in. In Savannah, Georgia, my kids had to pay insurance and the device enclosure. So we had to spend about $90 in Savannah to be able to get our kid a school-run device. So we are one of the cheaper districts for not passing that on to our consumers. The only time we do ask for money is after the first breakage. We pay for the first breakage on every device for a kid during each year. But any second and third breakages will be on the parents to cover.
Right, I mean, and, and not just to go back and forth, all that sounds good, but I'm just talking in terms of there are some fees and there's some fees here, in terms of trying to figure out a way how we can get this more, get all of this done. Because there, there, there are technology fees and there are some, there's some other, there's some other fees that hadn't come, that didn't come to me right now. I was thinking in terms of activity fees, I'm thinking of how much maybe, could that money be used for any of this? But in, in terms of really trying to understand, is this going to be in every year, annual thing? In terms of we won't be able to cut technology, in terms of spending down, or? You've got a lot of technology that's not going anywhere, so it's kind of concerning and alarming. This conversation has to be had.
We kind of work on a bell curve. We have lower years at about four to five million, but we do have certain years that we do get up to six and seven million. It just depends on the curve of the refresh. Another thing is that the money we do collect from students at $25, we buy the student bags with it. So that is not money we take away from 8% dollars. We use though, that money to buy student bags. We also use it to buy broken technology. So say a kid doesn't turn in a charger, that's 45.50. That kid leaves the district, we can ask for that money back, but we might not ever see it. But yet, that next school year, we've got to have that charger ready for the next incoming student. So we self-repair a lot of this stuff.
I need to have, we have another person who wants to make a comment.
Mr. Cho Han covered a lot of what I was going to say, but I think also, we have 35 school buildings, servers, routers, switches, wires. We have AV equipment, we have technology for security, cameras. It, I, I think that generally speaking, our one-to-one devices are probably not the biggest part of that budget by far. And it's expensive to manage, and I do think you're correct about cybersecurity and the threats being posed that are increasing in complexity. The other thing is, we are a one-to-one district. What I hear more frequently is that people are nervous that we are, we need to do more to prepare our kids to live in a techno-centric world, because that is just the way everything is going. So I think it is important that we continue to invest in technology. But again, I mean, just the E-rate funds alone, it would cost us $2.6 million not to invest in technology. But I think that that would be a step backwards from where society is driving at the moment and the skill set that our students are going to need. So I just wanted to make it clear that the $7 million is not just the laptops, it's all the infrastructure at 35 buildings, plus the district office, plus the.
Out of that 7 million, only 1 million is actually going towards the student refresh.
Mr. Dallas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mrs. Cho Han, for explaining where the $7 million in technology spent. When the operations group had a wonderful conversation about it, I was leaning towards reducing the technology portion. I think at some point in time, a very rigorous system-wide review of technology and how we utilize it for efficiency sake, and answer the question of standardization where efficiency comes from versus decentralization where innovation tends to come. Can we, can we reach that medium point? So with that, I also feel like with the optics of leaking roofs, I don't think we want to go forward as an organization without knowing about them and not repairing them. So I would ask that whatever option allows us to take care of every leaking roof in the district, that that will be one that is, that is incorporated in whatever option is chosen. And then let's see if there's some softer areas that we can back away from. Don't want kids being rained on in our buildings. Thank you very much.
I think we could have a motion, and, and we can have a discussion after the motion. So if you want to go ahead and give a motion, sir?
I will. I move that the Board of Education approve choice three as listed in the amount of 34,999,227 as the final list of capital improvement projects for fiscal year 27, 8% funding.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, and. Go ahead.
With that, so for clarity, I do agree with what Mr. Dallas just said, and I wanted to bring it to clearly. I'm glad the point, the point was delivered, and you said it much more politely. So I'm, so in the, in the future, in the near future, I hope that we do do exactly what Mr. Dallas, the point that he brought up, because I, I said that, and I really mean that, because at some point in time, we definitely have to get ahead on technology. So, but to this, to this, to this current motion, my, my next point was, so you were saying that, that it didn't, it didn't take part, it didn't finish, what, what, what didn't it finish? Excuse me. You said, you said it finished in terms of roof. You said it finished part of one school's roof, or one school's project, but didn't finish the other part of it. And what is that exactly?
So option, choice three, delays some painting projects, keeps some in that are high priority. It keeps the Beaufort High McCracken painting, those are the two. It fully funds Hilton Head Middle School and Bluffton Middle School roofing projects and funds some roof sections on Hilton Head School for the Creative Arts.
Okay, that's my point right there. Some roofs, some roofs, and I don't want to, so, so my, my problem is this, I don't want to piecemeal it.
No, I understand.
So I, I want to do the full, the full roof of it. If that means no painting, nowhere, nowhere, nowhere else, because the problem is, if, if we come back and we have to do the roof again, then it, it could spread, and so now we're paying for more. So, so let's get a clear understanding that we're doing, are we doing the full roof and not the painting?
Mr. Rodding will give us some more information on it.
Yeah, you can go right ahead.
So what we asked our PMs to look at is what do we feel very comfortable in doing over a summer? And it's not uncommon for us to phase a roof like this. We did this at Beaufort High.
And consultant.
Right.
Who guides us on.
So the, the plan will be to come back the next year and finish it. So it'll just divide it into two phases instead of one. And with the amount of roofing work that we're looking at in this 8%, if it gets approved, is a pretty large amount for our three contractors we have right now. So this is what was recommended by the PMs. It'll at least get us started on SCA, and it's making commitment to replacing that roof. It'll just be divided into two phases, which we've done before. And a lot of times, due to the size of the roof, we have to do that anyway on a lot of the projects.
Okay, real, real quick, for the general, for the general public, what I want to say on that is that I was at a county council meeting a couple, maybe months up, maybe about last month, and there was a pool that was being worked on in the, in Bluffton. And they, and they had just remodeled the pool, and the young lady said, she said, y'all just remodeled the pool, and now y'all are shutting the pool down again, and have to do more renovation work. Why didn't y'all do it the first time? And so to bring up my point, my point is valid, and I want to make this public. My, my point is this, if we want, if we're going to touch it, let's work on it and let's finish it. So that, that, as, as, as a person hearing the community and hearing what is being said, I, I'm, before that person comes and say it at this meeting, I'm saying it right now, looking, moving forward. I'm hoping that when we get situations like this with roofs, of something of this magnitude, this serious, that we can do it and knock it all out, versus coming back and making it in phases. And it's not, not to go back and forth, that's just something I want to put out there, and that's my stance on that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dr. Carter, do you have a comment? Okay, I could call the question. Let's read the, let's read the motion again, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve choice three as listed in the amount of 34,999,227 as the final list of capital improvement projects for fiscal year 27, 8% funding.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Opposed, two opposed. Okay. Dallas, no. Okay, motion carries. Do you have anything further?
That's it. I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is local aboard approved courses.
Yes, sir. Dr. Stratos is going to come back up. She's going to provide some of the greater details regarding the local board approved courses that we shared, that the academic committee talked about, get in a little more depth.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez and board members. Board members, once again, as a reminder, on May 22nd, the academic committee met to review their Avid Local Board Approved Courses. Board members, as you may remember, Avid is an acronym for Advocating Via Individual Determination. These LBA courses are in support to Hilton Head Middle School and Hilton Head High School, and they stand on the work of our first Avid school, which was Beaufort Middle School. In your folders are the course outlines, and there's a motion for your consideration. With this, I want to make mention of our two principals once again. Clint Austin, our principal for Hilton Head Island Middle School. Our principal as well, Stephen Stidridge, our principal for Hilton Head IB High School. Joining as well is Megan Jarrett, she is our director for the Changemakers Grant, which manages three of our schools in the Hilton Head Island area, as well as Karen McKenzie, who has been instrumental at putting together the documentation for these local board approved courses. So with that, I bring forward Ms. McKenzie and myself for any questions that you may have. We have an LBA for the high school, as well as the LBA for the middle school. These courses will start this coming academic school year. The teacher units are being funded through the grant, as well as the professional development for our educators, as well as our school leadership.
You have any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you. I think Avid looks fantastic. I have two questions. One is, I know Avid has a program that is geared towards English language learners. Will that be implemented in our schools?
We are, actually, that is at the center of the grant. Mrs. Boatright, I do want to share that the opportunity as well, and Ms. McKenzie and I had conversation, is even looking at having a native speakers course for high school. Yes, ma'am, for our middle school, surprise principals, but we are even looking at, into that for the middle school to start a local board approved course, so that may be coming in front of you during the next academic school year.
I have heard so much about people asking for that and the benefits of heritage language course, so I appreciate that tremendously. And I guess I actually have two more questions. Have we already identified the next year's cohort?
For Avid?
For Avid, yeah.
So if I could share, so these principals, as well as Megan Jarrett, Ms. Jarrett, have worked very hard at keeping to the core of the Avid practice and philosophy of having interviews being completed. So those will be completed during the summer. The spaces are already identified in the master schedule for the courses, but the opportunity for the interviewing process for the students is being conducted, and we are being compliant to the Avid practice, conducting interviews.
And my last question, just, $4,000, is that per student or is that per course?
So that, that is actually a subscription fee that is paid for it, so it's not by course. Then we pay separately for the professional development component.
But it's not a per student fee?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Could we, could we hear from the two principals?
If we please have, actually, if I could have the remaining team come join us, because they, last week, actually, I have to, if I may boast, look at the happy face. They were very much involved in training, that we had official international baccalaureate training. We had two days for the PYP, Primary Years Program, conducted, and then we had two, two days of leadership. All of that was conducted at the schools, so we didn't have to pick the cost for travel, and the IB consultants came directly here to Beaufort County. So please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to join the meeting this evening. So we have been working hard to get our cohorts set, get our classes set, and we, we are excited for Avid and the opportunities that it'll bring our school. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or I can just speak generally about what it would look like.
Could you speak generally about the program?
Absolutely. So in our school, we are going to offer this program with your approval, of course, to our sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade students. We have it lined up to be two courses for the sixth graders, two sections, which will encompass forty of the sixth graders, one course offering for seventh graders, and so that will be about twenty, and then a twenty section, uh, I'm sorry, twenty percent section for eighth grade as well. So the hope is that we can get to what they like to call the academic middle with our students. That is a term that avid uses and that is something that we are focused on, as Dr. Stratos said, through the application process. We have identified students that we think would be great students, but we are also encouraging as many students as possible to apply so we can get the right group and fill these sections of the course. We also have our teacher named. Uh, our teacher is actually our current teacher of the year, which is wonderful, and she's going to do a great job with the courses. And, um, we know that once we get it started, it's going to grow itself, so we do expect that this program will turn into a very highly desired course throughout the years, and we anticipate that we are going to be growing sections of this, uh, very rapidly. So that is the hope. With any luck, this course will produce students who are advancing their academics, not only in our school, but as they go to the high school as well. Our goal is to take students who are potentially college-bound and interested in in attending college and even some that maybe are just considering it, and we grow them so that they can take more advanced and honors level courses, but also potentially high school level courses in the middle school, and maybe that was not an option or or in their outlook previously, but avid could help them get to that. And then, of course, I'll let Mr. Shitter talk about the high school a little bit, but the the end goal is to get them prepared for college and and ready to go for college with organization, motivation, public speaking opportunities, and things like that.
Sure, absolutely.
So we've gone closely with the other school counselors, uh, over at Hilton Head Middle, and they've identified, uh, a lot of the eighth graders that are kind of on the bubble to to filter them into, uh, the avid program. So, uh, the plan at Hilton Head High School is to start them out in ninth grade, so they're actually going to be on an AB, uh, schedule where we have, uh, again, these are students who typically do not take honors classes, so what they're gonna do on every other day is is they're gonna take avid, uh, and the next day they're gonna be, uh, in a English one honors class. So those two teachers, um, are going to be working together to help develop those students, you know, teach them, uh, the basic skills that they need in order to be eventually be successful and challenge, uh, those advanced classes like our IB program. Um, those same students, we're also going to try and filter them into, um, um, a a native language, uh, you know, class, um, because we we find that a lot of our Spanish or native Spanish speakers are coming to our class when we put them in a Spanish one class. We kind of lose them there a little bit because they kind of feel it's beneath them a little bit. So, uh, with a native language class, we can challenge them, so eventually they can move on to Spanish two, Spanish three honors, and eventually IB Spanish. Um, but we're also planning on that the skills that they're acquiring in these, uh, in the avid class and with that English one honors class is we can look at also putting them into an earth science honors class too. So these are students that are coming in and, uh, we're going to help them, uh, become highly motivated, uh, students that we think we would eventually challenge our IB program going, you know, when they hit the junior and senior year. So.
Okay, we've heard now, uh, a description of what you are looking for. Let's have the motion now and then we'll have a discussion and questions.
I move that the Board of Education approve the following local board approved courses. Hilton Head Island High School, grades nine, avid. Hilton Head Island Middle, grades six, seven, eight, avid.
Second from Ms. Gordon. Okay, discussion or questions?
Um, could you tell the public, General, Dr. Uh, Dr. Scruggs, could you tell the public who may be listening that know what avid is, they just hear us going avid, avid, could you tell the general public what avid stands for and what that means? Because everyone doesn't know that.
So the A is for advocating, the V is via, the A is individual, the D is determination. At the core of avid, and and both these gentlemen did a beautiful job putting forward, is having our students building their portfolio at practice of learning, building their confidence, number one, with regard to questioning, inquiry processes, and and centered to that is what is known as WICER, which is writing, inquiry, communications, organization, and reading. Building those skill sets so that a student knows to use which strategies that correlate with the writing to be successful for the depth of an English one honors or for an HL, English Lit course as they go to a diploma course. So building that capacity, building my knowledge and understanding Socratic seminar and how to question when there's a question of inquiry and being able to respond and give the thesis and support information back to the teacher and my fellow students in the classroom. See, knowing how to communicate, having that skill set in order to build a sentence, build not only that sentence, but that sentence is going to persuade you in order to maybe vote in a certain way, because that actually happens in the avid classes, I have to share that. The organization instruction of how, what to do for your homework, what do you need to be successful for assessments, what do I need to be successful for an IB diploma test, and the reading complexity. And and one of the biggest things for our students at reading, especially at the high school level, is being able to make those words become something in your head so you can connect all the knowledge that you our teachers have built with you. So WICER is, so does that help a little bit?
That's awesome. I definitely appreciate that. And I'm I'm a big component of it from it being, um, Beaufort Middle School, I mean, yeah, Beaufort Middle School, um, they were the first ones in this.
Yes, sir.
Two started, and so the principal made sure when we sat down that she explained to me what it was. That's why I think it's important for people to know exactly what we're supporting. So I appreciate that.
And Chairman Garib, I may share, because I did make mention to you and the board prior, that the Gear Up Grant, I was waiting for that funding to be, tomorrow the funding is being released, I have that grant already completed. So should we be in point of receipt, it'll be a four additional schools and actually help fund the two schools behind me in conjunction with the Changemaker Grant as well, sir.
I I want to echo what Mr. Smith said. I've watched this program at Beaufort Middle School for two years. And it's very seldom do I see a program that not only the teachers are enthusiastic about, but the students are enthusiastic about it. They take ownership of their scholarship. And and that was the most impressive, along with the writing portion, because that writing skill set is absolutely critical. And, uh, I was blown away. I I I think this is a great program and I I I plan to support it, but this vote here. Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Dallas?
Yes, I didn't know anything about avid until I actually read the materials for this meeting. It really is phenomenal. The other thing that I'm so impressed about having worked in countries where English is not the primary language and trying to transact business, uh, when when someone can pick up the language in which the where their world is conducted in, it really is a force multiplier in terms of them being able to move up the ladder in terms of personal effectiveness and what that brings to them. I hope the public realizes how far public schools go to accommodate each and every student who is here in America and teach them how to be successful in our society. So kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Chairman Garib, I may. I want, this also builds on the work that our superintendent has brought here to the district, and I have I have to put that forward. If it wasn't for the belief and philosophy coming from our district leadership, this wouldn't be happening amongst us as well, and I I just wanted to make mention, so thank you.
Good question. Yes.
Thank you. Um, I also wanted to say, I think we talk and have talked several times about school culture and discipline. There is evidence that shows that avid students have a marked reduction in disciplinary referrals. And so what I'll be interested in is this is a fairly decent sized cohort, twenty twenty, you know, we've got about a hundred kids. I think we should look at that because if we can demonstrate through these programs that we are able to achieve some disciplinary improvements and some school culture improvements, that's something that really validates even expanding this, you know, beyond what we have. But I think that's something, that's one, these are one of the few solutions I've heard that I really think could have a meaningful impact on, uh, school discipline. So thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you.
There are no other comments or questions, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. I see a unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stratos.
Thank you.
Next on the superintendent's report is Mr. Crossby. We have a budget update from Mr. Crossby.
Good evening. Uh, as a brief overview, a recap of the budget for the viewing public, um, this is a reminder of our, uh, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six operating budget. So this is next year. That budget, which was approved by the board, uh, certified by the board on May twentieth, uh, is a three hundred and seventy-six million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollar budget. It's a seventeen point eight million dollar increase, which is five percent over the prior year. There were three top priorities, teacher and support staff compensation, academic programs, and safety and security. Um, one of the primary areas of, uh, the, uh, priorities that we listed, uh, were the teacher salaries. Uh, so our district made a concerted effort to move teacher salaries, a bold effort, uh, to move our teacher salaries to a minimum of sixty thousand eighty-seven dollars. And so that will be the starting teacher salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And, uh, it includes a four thousand dollar increase in every cell of the teacher salary schedule. So no matter where a teacher is, whether they're a master's with zero or a master's with five or a bachelor's plus eighteen and ten years, they would receive a four thousand dollar increase. Um, so in addition to that, they will receive the mandated step increase as well, and we are planning to expand steps from twenty-eight years to thirty. So that will help us to keep the most experienced and veteran teachers in our district just a little longer. Uh, other staff will receive a three percent cost of living increase plus a step and expands those steps to thirty as well to align with the teachers. So again, uh, this budget was certified by the board on May twentieth. Uh, and then, uh, due to the fact that our district does not currently have fiscal autonomy, we are required to go to county council for three readings of an ordinance. Uh, we have accomplished two of those. Uh, so the first reading was approved unanimously, um, in first reading on May twenty-seventh. And last night, uh, we unanimously had approval of the budget once again, uh, with only one clarifying question, and it had to do with the four thousand dollar increase, making sure that every teacher was going to receive that increase. Uh, so we were very successful yesterday evening, and I anticipate that we will be in the third reading. Uh, that will be held, uh, that meeting will be held on June twenty-third, and I verified this evening that it will be located at the Burton Wells Recreation Facility at six P. M. And so we do anticipate full support by county council, and I'll be happy to, um, take any comments or questions you may have this evening.
How many other questions? Seeing none?
Thank you, Ms. Crosby.
Thank you, Ms. Crosby. Our next item is a board business action. We have no board business action. I now would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
And second, but any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. A future agenda topics? Do we have future agenda topics? Or Dallas?
Um, as as alluded to earlier, um, as we go forward, and I don't know when the appropriate time is, but to have a very strategic review of technology, how we utilize it, where there may be opportunities to capture some efficiencies, lighten the load on our employees or colleagues, uh, so that they can sort of prioritize where time is best spent, um, and without basically losing the tremendous esprit de corps that exists among the administration and its staff. And so, um, just want to highlight that at whatever time is appropriate.
Other future agenda topic? I'm going to make one. I'd I'd like to have a future agenda topic as, as security measures at our schools. Uh, Dr. Rodriguez, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Uh, this evening, I want to announce, um, two, uh, principals moving forward into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Uh, we had interviews for Battery Creek High School and selected as a principal to lead, uh, Battery Creek High School, uh, moving forward is Dr. Alandy Thompson, who is currently our Beaufort Middle School principal, and you heard from this evening, uh, she'll be moving to Battery Creek High School as the principal. And then at Will Branch Early College High School, I am appointing, uh, Freedom Mechanic, uh, to lead the school, uh, next year. Thank you very much.
You now have time for second, or the second public comments, and I'd like to read the public comments instructions. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker on Beaufort County School District and school-related topics. Citizens wishing to participate in public comments can do so in person or via phone. There are two public comment periods. The first is a thirty-minute period near the beginning, limited to topics on the board meeting agenda. The second is a fifteen-minute session, which takes place prior to adjournment, but no later than nine P. M. Request to participate in public comments via the phone will be accepted electronically. Uh, please sign up using the public comment form twenty-four hours from the day of the meeting. Requesters will subsequently receive a phone call during their respective public forum time and should be ready to speak. Citizens desiring to participate in in-person must fill out a public comment card to that can be obtained from the board clerk upon arrival. We have five in-person public comments and we have one telephonic. We'll start with the in-person. Uh, first person's name is, I think it's Rentley Kitty, and the subject is child returning to school.
Good evening, Brother Chair. Your cabinet, my name is Renty Kitty, from the south, uh, south of the Broad. Our issue is we have a young lady that got into an incident in middle school, and, uh, she went through the entire process, everything that she needed to do, her father and her mother took her through it. But when it was time for her to be able to return to school to go to ninth grade at, uh, Bluffton High, we seemed to run into a little bit of muddy waters, and we would like to, uh, clear that up, uh, so that what was said at the beginning, uh, is carried through the entire end, and the young lady should be able to return to school to receive all of the accolades I understand the students will be getting at the schools. And she's only fifteen years old. She did her punishment completely, her parents gave her the studies to study at home, and she came out, um, in her mind, she's doing real good, but she's only fifteen years old. And so we hope that the board could help, uh, to own up to what they said would happen after the young lady was, uh, has completed her, uh, punishment. And that's why we are here tonight, hopefully that we get some good resolve, and we know we can't get it tonight, but we would like for you all to put that on your agenda and be able to listen to both sides of the story. You all want to say?
Anything, you still have some time? Do you, would you like to have, say something?
Basically, you can just combine, there's another.
But you could talk in.
There's another public comment from Jana and John, uh, Jana and Johnny Bryant that you can just combine with this one. Um, our concern is that our daughter would like to go and needs to go back to school. The incident happened in middle school, we are now in high school, and we would just really like to have a meeting with somebody to sit down and talk about the whole entirety.
Anything else?
Uh, no, sir. We appreciate the time that that we can come up here and explain ourselves, but like I said, this was a more matter that we need to actually sit down. We've been, uh, taking, uh, a lot of step forward, trying to email, sending emails to the responsible party, but we haven't get any response back. So that's what brought us to this meeting tonight, to kind of make this publicly known that we've been doing the proper procedure and measurements to get this matter on the table, to get her back into school.
Okay. We we cannot respond at the board meeting, but I am certain that you will get a response.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And let's, let me mention this as a past roofing contractor, he is absolutely right. If you do not fix the leaks in the roofs, you will start to get mildew in the building. And if you get mildew, mildew, then you have to clean out all the mildew. So I just wanted to echo what the boardman said. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Miller, uh, you have a a ban comment and a big thank you, it says. Please.
Do you want to do others first that time?
No, please, please come up, sir. We we take them in order that they're received.
Yes, a big thank you. You've been patient with me for a year. I appreciate the board for all you've done. I appreciate the administration. I appreciate the time that I have seen you spend at the end of the second semester. at the end of the second semester concerts of, and then the time you have spent at vacuolo or commensments. You have seen, and I have tried to make as many of these as I can, you have seen a great dichotomy in quality. I understand the administration with your coaxing is trying to do several little things, some more subtle than others, to bring that dichotomy to a more middle ground. My only comment from what I've seen from talking with people in the past, when I say people in middle management in the administration, is oftentimes I get a comment, if I make a suggestion, well, we can't do that at school. I get the impression that we need a lot more cooperation and from just not the administration, but at the principal level and the individual schools. I think they've been satisfied with what they've seen at the middle, at the, when I say middle school, I mean the principals at the, both middle and high school. I think we need to somehow press more emphasis on that. I would like to also see that there's some goals set, and there's an anticipated achievement of those, and they are reviewed. My, from you as a board, as you go and attend some of these things, I hope you can see an improvement in yourself. I'd like to see the national anthem being able to be my time, so.
Thank you, sir.
But a big thank you.
This is already been done. Okay. Next one on the item is Ms. Freeman.
Hello, how y'all doing today? My name is Quanisha Freeman. I have a son who attends H.E. McCracken Middle School. I've been trying to get in contact with everyone. I spoke to Mr. Chad Cox. I spoke to Ms. McKenzie. I called the on buzz man. And Chad Cox did get back in contact with me, but this is what's going on. My son had a plan to take his life. A teacher at H.E. McCracken, as well as the athletic director, told him he won't amount to nothing. He didn't want him. And also, he purposely doesn't pay him any attention. He told him he doesn't pay him no attention at school. And he also told him he wouldn't amount to nothing at school. I made Mr. Cox aware about that. I even spoke to the principal, as well as the assistant principal. My son has to take summer school. That teacher is teaching summer school. I've been trying to get in contact with Ms. Alice Walton. Haven't got a call back. I've tried everyone. I even tried to get in contact with Ms. Frank Rodriguez. I can't speak his last name. But anyway, and I keep getting the runaround. Only thing I want is for my son to receive summer school. And Chad Cox, as well as the principal, have told me my son has to go back to H.E. McCracken face-to-face and do summer school. They are H.E. McCracken, and that teacher is also teaching summer school at H.E. McCracken. My son will not be traumatized. My son now is getting help. He goes, he gets, he's a counselor. He goes get help every Friday around 4 o'clock because that teacher, athletic director, as well as his father traumatized him. My son has been verbally abused, mentally abused, and bullied. I just need some help.
For your comments. Next person is Sharon Beard.
Good evening. I just have a complaint about Battery Creek's graduation. The class of 2025 was not, I don't know if we would say allowed, but they did not walk across the stage, which is symbolic of them leaving one stage of their life, achieving their academic goals and moving on to the next phase of their life. I know I'm the only one here tonight that's speaking of it, but it was really disappointing to travel, to see your child, grandchild, niece, nephew, whatever have you, walk the stage, and it was not permitted. So can someone tell me why that was, or will it happen again? And as far as I know, Battery Creek was the only high school whose graduates did not walk the stage this year.
We can't respond during public comments, but I'm certain that somebody in the administration will be contacting you.
Okay, thank you.
Comment, Mr. Cook?
Hello, Mr. Cook. This is Robin Cushingberry. I'm calling you for public comments. It's your turn now, and I'm giving you your voicemail. Thank you. That is voicemail.
Yeah, no answer?
No answer.
You gave us left to miss it?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey. Mr. N?
I want to make an announcement because as someone who works in healthcare, you spend a lot of time training for emergencies, preparing your equipment, checking it. Very rarely do you get to test it. And I wanted to commend the staff for an excellent job executing emergency protocols, and especially to Dr. Mello Lee for heroic actions in this instance. So really appreciated that when you have all this trained, it actually works. And Dr. Rodriguez, too. So thank you both. And thank you to all the staff for an excellent implementation of the protocol that fortunately, we rarely have the opportunity to test.
Okay, we have a number of people here that I don't know if you wish to make a public comment. You did not, you did not sign up, so we have finished our agenda. There is no objection?
I was going to add to that. I was going to say also to them, but also, also, it also shows the importance of Mrs. Jerry Henderson as well, because she's big on that, and she was just on me the other day about coming to be able to get my first aid kit. So shout out to her, too, because she makes sure that everyone just.
Good point. Good point. We will adjourn by unanimous consent. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.